Whenever you're ready, Miles.
All right, it works, we're good.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the planning commission meeting, path charter township, it's Tuesday, November the 12th. Everybody reviewed the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as printed.
Thank you.
Second?
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Any disclosures of conflict of interest in any of the subjects on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. No public here for public comment. Minutes of the meeting from October the 22nd.
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of whatever date that is, October the 22nd, aye, as printed.
I'll second that.
There's a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No, thank you.
I'm staying.
I actually, I wasn't here.
You didn't watch the video?
Thank you very much.
Make sure you know that you...
You don't trust us.
Communications, Miles, do you have any communications parts?
None at this time.
Wow, we're really moving.
Yeah.
Old business ordinance amendment, and we've gotta have a public hearing, so...
Yep.
Let's open the public hearing. Excuse me, seeing no public, Miles, you wanna give us a quick rundown on the ordinance?
Yeah, this is the same one we brought to you last time. We had a couple edits that were mentioned last time that we didn't throw in this yet 'cause when I was reviewing the printed off packet, we just attached the wrong copy into it. But if, from memory, I think there was two of these that we were combining into one, just to get rid of line items. So our apologies that we attached the wrong one, but we have those edits. So if this gets approved tonight, I would just recommend that it get the approval with the edits that were made on the October 22nd meeting. Other than that, it's pretty simple. This is outside of the zoning ordinance, so it's not something that necessarily has to be, is required statutorily to bring to this body, but just because our planning staff helped write it and create this, we obviously always use you guys' input to help vet what we create. This is at the request of the assessing department to update their ordinance to be in line with state law.
Yep. Hey, buddy, you got any questions or comments?
Maybe you may have caught it already, but on the first page...
Mm-hmm, I do.
The second paragraph is the wrong paragraph.
Where are we at?
First page.
Okay.
Ordinance provide for regulation of trees. He says a place is...
Oh, this one here? Yeah, no, I didn't catch that. That's just 'cause that's a placeholder.
Yeah.
But well, thank you for that. Let's make a note, yeah, let's make a note. We just need to change that before it gets to the board. This is just our template, and we obviously said change that. But again, we attached the wrong copy, so maybe it's changed.
Do we need to clarify the 250 is for the, for the clear cutting as commercial?
The two, like the dollar amount on the fee schedule?
Does it need to be clarified as commercial?
No, but that's what I was about to say. We'll get to that in the next item.
Yeah, we're at the fee schedule.
Yeah, that's a different item. Can we get a final copy of this before the next meeting, Miles?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can even email it out, or I can bring it to the next meeting before we vote.
Just bring it to the next meeting, be fine.
That'd be great.
Because I don't wanna...
No, I 100% agree.
To the board, that's the issue I've got.
Yeah, you got a couple things going on, so makes sense.
Doesn't that happen? Yep, not a catastrophe. All right, seeing there's no public, I'm gonna close the public meeting. And everybody got a problem with this ordinance that they wanna...
I move to postpone the vote on this until we see an updated version.
Okay.
Are you gonna vote on it?
No.
No, he's postponed it.
Postpone it till next week, or the next meeting.
Next meeting.
I mean, at all.
Does anybody have any objection?
He meant, is there gonna be a motion to extend or postpone?
He made the motion.
He made a motion.
He made the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Will that be the meeting where Miles is gone?
Yeah.
Well, we gotta talk about that. I was gonna talk about that during report from planner, but we...
Okay.
Yeah, let's wait on that.
All right.
I don't think that's gonna matter, but, no. Any discussion about the motion?
My question was, do we even need to vote on it? Because it doesn't really have to come before this board. Are you honest?
No, I'm fine with that, boy. I think that provides clarity for me on what to do, and it's transparent to the public.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
And there's no rush to get this to the board of trustees.
No, this is something that's been a problem for years, and we're just taking the time.
So I think they can just do a voice vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any of them opposed? Hearing none, that's what we'll do, Miles.
Okay, I appreciate that. Sorry for the delay on our end.
Yep, that's not a problem. Okay, now we've got another public meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
The fee schedule. Miles, do you wanna give us, let's open the public meeting, seeing there's no public, guess it's a formality though, right?
Yep.
Do you wanna give us a rundown on the fee schedule with changes?
Yeah, we did make an update from last time, too, just because we were talking about the clear cutting ordinance, which Mr. Baker alluded to. Obviously, the language that we changed, before I get to that, isn't anything substantial, the real, I guess, amendment we're trying to make here is just providing some flexibility for the board of trustees to use discretion when determining escrow amounts. This is due to, we're starting to have larger manufacturing interests in the township as of late, and it's never really been something that was set up to allow us to have the correct dollar amount to review things of this scale. And the costs that we're seeing associated with review fees continue to go up, so we just thought it was good to have some flexibility. We tried within the fee schedule itself. So we've made the language pretty vague in the ordinance itself to future-proof it, and we tried to add clarity within the fee schedule document, which is an easier document to amend, that the board would only have that flexibility if a certain bar was reached. And the current bar that we had established or recommended to you guys, and I think you guys even talked about reducing it to five acres, was, you know, 10, or what you guys recommended, five acres or 20,000 square feet. So the other change we made to the fee schedule was, we talked about the clear cutting ordinance, and we realized as we were, staff was looking at all of this, that we hadn't established an application fee. So if somebody does apply to get a clear cutting permit, or the ordinance has been passed, now staff has to figure out a way to execute the ordinance. A part of that is assigning a fee, because everything costs money, right? Our time costs money, you guys' time costs money. So we looked around at what some municipalities around us were doing. It's hard, because as you guys know, when we went through the clear cutting ordinance language, there are a million ways you could skin this thing. The way we ended up going was kind of a narrower path. So there's also a million ways on how you can charge for this permit. You could charge it by acres or whatever. Our recommendation was just a clean 250, doesn't matter the size, because the process is gonna be the same kinda regardless, and the materials we reuse will be the same regardless size of property. If we charge this and we find out that this is wildly under what it ends up costing us to review, then we can adjust at that time. On the high end, what we were seeing was prices around 300 per this permit. So we thought scaling it back a little bit to 250 seemed reasonable, just to get us going. So everything I just said is subjective, in our opinion, in the department, but we're open to whatever, that's just what we were thinking. Other than that, yeah, that's the fee schedule. Most of the, or your recommendation for the fee scheduling amendments, most of it has to do with escrow, and then a little bit with that clear cutting.
So George, were you saying you wanted that to say "commercial" clear cutting?
I just wanted to make sure it was understood that it was for a commercial.
Yeah, the ordinance itself spells it out pretty clearly. I'm...
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm... The public, let's say like a resident came in for a clear cutting, because they saw, we would just say like, hmm, yeah, it doesn't apply.
Guess what, you don't need to.
Yeah.
I just didn't happen to notice the commercial on this first, first page.
If you guys think that's more adds clarity, then I'm...
No, as long as it's noted in, in the actual document, I just didn't see it in the first page.
Yeah, so...
You could even put it below the application fee in that box, you know, like, "commercial properties" or something like that.
Yeah, I'd like to... What, what is the bottom line about why we're making that ordinance, the clear cutting ordinance? What are we trying to do or trying not to do?
Well, the clear cutting ordinance is already passed, so let's be clear about that. But the point of the clear cutting ordinance is to provide for a way for the township to regulate just vast cutting of, you know, vegetated property on...
Green space.
A green space, as it applies to commercial land uses.
Yeah, okay.
What would, it would apply to customers eat 41 acre, in a 41 unit building was, something, he wants to be sold, the soccer field.
Yeah.
He's already clear cut that, but with his ordinance, he would have to come in and get it.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask that is, you know, you mentioned it's gonna be flat unilateral 250, is because if we're kind of trying to limit green, you know, green space clearing, then that would make a logical purpose for a graduated, doing it by acres. By, you know, the larger it gets, the more you're gonna have to pay.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm fine with that. That's all to you guys.
I think that would be okay if we had a person going out there and checking trees and doing all that. But if we're just, it's gonna cost the same to do it, no matter if it's five acres, or 20 acres, or 200 acres. I mean, I understand the philosophy behind trying to limit the clear cutting, but it's just, I just don't see the...
You know, trees do that.
We're trying to eliminate just clear cutting with abandon, just going in and blazing it down.
Right, and if we charge a fee, then we're, we, we already have it as a, we have the ability to manage that through our ordinance, not through financing the fee. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Because we have an ordinance that says this, and they come before the body, and the body says, well, this is what you gotta do. And then there's fines for what they, if they, you know, go beyond their rights.
Because there's a period of runoff and the like, and just...
Right, but we have a way to hold, my point is, we have a way to hold them accountable without gouging the fee, or running the fee up.
But you're saying, Miles, that whether somebody comes in with a five acre property, or a 20 acre property, the staff work to go through that clear cutting process is the same?
I can't guarantee that, but that's my assumption right now.
Okay. Most likely the same.
And I think what Ray is saying is, well, let's create ends. I'm agnostic, I don't care either way. I hope I'm using that word the right way. But what Ray's saying is, let's create incentive structure. So like, but what I'm hearing from Mr. Baker here is, he's saying the incentive structure is all Ray created.
Actually, it's a disincentive structure.
Disincentive structure, sure, but... Both arguments are valid. You guys have to decide.
I feel like, I don't know. The justification of the size fees seems less straightforward. As opposed, I mean, if fees are to account for staff time and staff labor, if that doesn't change significantly based on the size of the project, then the fee probably shouldn't either.
Yeah, and that's a good, that is a good point, though, that maybe I should be thinking about, which is like, what is your likelihood that you're gonna get applicant pushback in the form of a lawsuit? We wouldn't, you, and I, I don't think that what you're suggesting is unreasonable, but it could, it could get unreasonable if like, let's say they owned 100 acres, and they're like, why am I getting charged seven grand?
Well, you could get, put a cap on it, you know?
Yeah.
Just like you do with the...
You wanna do something.
With the other fees. That was just a suggestion, because I always thought that we were trying to discourage clear cutting, per se.
No, I get, so that's what I'm saying, both of you guys' viewpoints are valid.
I mean, it's like, you know, murder, getting prosecuted for murder, you know, you go to prison for life. That's the, that's the punishment, you know? So if you do something bad, like cutting all the trees down, you have to pay more.
That's what's great about our committee, we can all...
Well, I think George is right, though, if they come in and apply for a permit, and we look at the site and think, you know, there's some extenuating circumstances we need to regulate in this, we can do that, put some conditions on the approval of the permit.
Yeah, you don't really wanna...
And then if they don't apply with them, then you're right, you got penalties.
So say they just go out there, you know, preemptively and cut all the trees down. What, what happens then?
So...
There's something in your...
Yeah, two, two things. One, I think I do, I'm trying to keep my opinions out of it, but I do kinda like what Ray just said.
I like to hear your opinions.
Because the whole point, the whole concept of this, if I remember correctly from our ordinance, was to incentivize good behavior and disincentivize bad behavior. Good behavior is coming in for a permit. So if you like, create barriers to entry for the permit, then you're just, you're, and developers by their nature are naturally, in my experience at least, are naturally like, you know, we're asked for forgiveness, not permission. They love asking for forgiveness. They hate asking for permission.
Yep.
And so in the ordinance, if you go and you clear a bunch of trees, the penalties are steep already.
Okay. That answers my question.
But we want, but I would say, I do agree, like, if we start ratcheting up barriers to entry to actually get them at the table, then it's like, now we're actually incentivizing them just to ask for forgiveness.
Right, so we can go back in and change that fee.
And you can grant their permit, deny their permit, and everything in between, right? They could come in, have 250 little barriers to entry, one meeting with you guys, and you guys could say, hey, we don't mind you clear cutting, you know, X, Y, and Z area, but yeah, stay away from here. You know, it's too close to the river, or whatever.
Right.
Can I, can we go back? I just want to agree with Mr. Baker on one of his earlier points that was clarifying that the clear cutting was associated with commercial use only. And the reason is that there's a mix of fees here related to personal property versus commercial property.
I think we just need to, what do you think about just being the word "commercial" clear cutting?
Yeah.
Okay, we must make a note of that.
Oh, well, does that...
Anything will probably work.
Yeah.
If you find that it needs to be changed, I'd recommend you use it.
I'd say "commercial property" clear cutting.
Is everyone good with that?
Yep.
All right.
The other thing we talked about, it was under the note, close to the end of this thing.
Okay.
It's, it doesn't apply to, don't use marijuana, but it's the note after that. That's where we got the 10 acres and 20,000 square feet.
Yeah.
We were gonna clarify that, say, not between five acres and 10 acres. But that's 10 acres of the parcel size, the 20,000 square feet is the building size.
Yeah, that's right.
We need to clarify that.
Well, you said that last time.
Yeah.
So we're, and we, just to make sure I'm right, too, Ray, we, didn't we take it down to five acres last time?
I think, I think we did.
Okay.
Yes, we did.
I would like to not do that, just my opinion, because five acres is a pretty small area. I mean, that would apply like if it was in town or something, but even in town, you have, what's the zoning? You know, that, that probably allows for you to take it down anyways.
Well, all this refers to is if the development exceeds five acres, the board of trustees has the right to request an increased escrow amount. That's all we're talking about.
Yeah, they're not saying you can't do it or anything.
Right, right. But that's the threshold.
I don't think giving the right to increase the escrow doesn't automatically mean the escrow's increased. I think it just gives the right to evaluate it on a case-by-case basis.
Because of the scope of the project.
Depending on, yeah, what type of development. If somebody's gonna put a pole barn on five acres versus if somebody's gonna put a bunch of condos on five acres, it's a much different project.
Our review fees could be different.
So related to the escrow payment increase, I thought the last time we talked about this, we determined that, that, that increase of escrow payment would be advised by the planning commission, not the board trustees because of political concerns.
Mm-hmm, we did.
And will that be like de rigueur for every SUP then? Will we have like a, a line item that says, okay, what are we going to elevate the escrow amount, or are we going to?
Yeah, what we talked about in our last meeting, just so we don't get off on rehashing this whole thing, was every time that you guys review any kind of commercial development, a list of recommendations comes in the form of a staff report. So like, once my staff report gets made for you guys, I make a new one for the board. In case you've been seeing this recently, where like, one of the conditions that you guys wanted actually got submitted and handled by the developer, so it came off of the board of trustees list of conditions that they saw. So this would be a condition where it would be put on in addition, because like, this body would say, we recommend that the escrow for this particular development be raised to an initial cost of $20,000. And then the board would see that, either agree that that's needed, or change, or deny.
Is that? I mean, I think there's a slippery slope with that kind of approach. I mean, there's certainly an efficiency there. But I, conditions that the, the planning commission makes recommendations of falling off of what's communicated with the board, I, I think can get problematic in terms of, I, I, you know, discretion being made in terms of, did they meet the requirement, did they make a promise to meet the requirement, and so it's not necessary? I think it's, would be better business to leave those conditions as is in the communication, and just say, have a, maybe a note in red, say, "condition already met."
Okay.
And then, you know, do that all the way down the chain in terms of what's, the, the states and county agencies have the conditions that they've made.
Yeah.
Township planning commission as well.
Yeah, that's more like a policy thing, but I'm, I'm fine to orientate our staff report however the spice is fit.
I just, I, I think, I mean, I just worry that...
You're worried about like the subjective nature of it.
Well, that and, you know, you've got more work than person power to, 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 to do the work. And, and, you know, having more eyes on documents is a protection for you and the township.
Yeah. No, I'm fine with that, I think that's good. But yeah, I still think that in, for this conversation, we will make it known in this ordinance that it needs to come from, the, the recommendation will come from the planning commission to the board. Because I do think that's more politically palatable, and then we will have that come in the form of the list of recommendations from the staff report.
I think a lot, supporting what Jason was saying about not taking stuff out of the, the, the board. It's gonna educate the boards to what we're doing, if we just leave them out. They don't know that we've requested, we've required this...
Yeah.
Condition.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, the one that we were talking about recently, just so you guys know, was to do with, I think, what was it, the fence?
That's what I was remembering.
And basically what happened was, it wasn't really one that could be subjective, but I think you are right. It'd be nice for the board to know that you guys did push an issue with the developer, and we got them to concede something. But basically what happened was, in the meantime between when it got, I think even before it went to the board, you guys had your first initial meeting with them, you said, hey, we need a fence here for screening.
For the Mallory pole barn.
Before Mallory even got the vote from the PC, they just went back that weekend, drew a line for a fence. And then they said, hey, we're resubmitting our plans. And so then by the time you guys did your second meeting, those plans were the approved submitted plans. So the site plan you approved already had the fix on it, so we were like, okay.
So it wasn't one of our conditions?
Well, it didn't become a condition anymore, because, and they already, they were like, no need to even put it in a condition, we're totally willing to do it, here's a plan showing we'll do it.
So putting it in the plan essentially makes it the condition.
Yeah.
It's conditional.
The condition was met. Now, if we go out, now let's say Mallory Building develops this thing, and we got no fence there, well, we'll just not issue them a C of O, because we'll say you didn't meet the approved staff plan, or approved site plan.
Right, correct.
So we're just, no, if you don't get a C of O, better not see anything stored in there, we're gonna be taking you to court. But Mallory Building's fine, I'm sure they'll vote a fence. They seem perfectly willing, and it wasn't a big barriers entry.
They seem easy to work with.
Yeah, they've been good to us in the past, so...
Yep.
All right, so we got a couple things to do, just to recap, I, wait, one thing, we didn't, in the discussion, five acres or 10 acres, are we good with five acres?
Five.
Okay, all right, so we're taking it down to five acres, we're making the note about the 20 square feet refers to the principal structure that's being developed. I think we also made the note that the five acres refers to the site area, because it could be multiple parcels.
Correct.
We're gonna change that, it is going to be a recommendation from the planning commission to the board of trustees. We're good with the 250 for now, and we will add "commercial property" clear cutting. So John, that's enough changes, too, where I'd say, if you guys are fine with it, we'll make these changes and bring it back for the final vote.
The 20,000 square feet, I think, should be the aggregate of buildings, they might put up three, four buildings, we don't...
Yeah, we'll just, we'll say principal structures, right? Because structures, yeah.
You wanna say "structure" or "structures"?
Plural. Yeah, in case it's like three different warehouses. But if there's...
Put "structure" parentheses, and put the S in.
Yeah.
So it can be either.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, let's close the public hearing. And we're gonna move this to the next trustee meeting, or planning commission meeting, is that correct?
That sounds good.
Okay, with the changes.
With the changes.
Okay. All right, let's move on. Renewable energy discussion, I think is the next topic, is that right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I gotta, can I roll through a couple things real quick?
Okay, go ahead.
So first of all, we've got this, I'll start kind of backwards on how it's laid out in the packet, but we got a map. There's a lot you can say about this map, and some of our GIS, like, you know, it's called if, then, or statements that filter information. Some of them didn't work out well, say that off the bat, like, I don't know what this little parcel's doing down here. But just ignore that. It worked, it worked out okay. I don't know if any of you guys have ever used GIS, like, you know, GIS Pro or Arc Maps. It's gotten much better over the years. But GIS has this funky thing that it does where anybody that's used this, you'll have two people side by side, typing in the same commands with the same base layers, and then you'll hit run, and they'll get two different results. And it's like infuriating.
Really?
So, yeah, like ask any student that's ever sat in a GIS class, and how frustrating it is. But anyways...
It didn't work out all that well.
Well, you don't, but, but we thought this basically summed up the idea. I think we had a better map at one point, but we couldn't find it, so we had to quickly try to recreate it. So what we're trying to basically communicate is, there are some parcels in the township that have a decent amount of size, the probably one that, and I know the cables currently are not into this at all, but we basically have a corridor here where there's a fair bit of connectability between all of these sites. And if you've ever seen how these, particularly the solar sites are set up, it's not like they work with one farm, and the, they have the entire solar field on one giant piece of land. Usually, because these giant pieces of land are rare, they'll have like four or five farms that are interconnected. And as long as they're in close proximity to each other, they'll run the infrastructure between all of the various solar fields. So that's what makes this area a little bit, well, I'll use the term risky here, risky for some type of solar development. Wind is kind of like a wild card, because obviously that takes up a significantly less land space and can be significantly easier located, even it through a, you know, a multiple municipality area. So that was a little bit harder for us to determine, like, what factors would be good for wind. Basically, all we tried to do here is say, hey, there are some large parcels in existence in the township, and some of them happen to have like similar family ownership. Like, I think these ones up here excluding this one, which I don't think should be on here. But this is the, correct me if I'm mistaken, you know, this is Peacock Farms.
Where's your cursor?
Here.
That's the, right there is the Carpenter family. So there's a 52 acre parcel, and a 66 acre parcel, and then there's the Trumble family that has, or what's not depicted is that quad of four below is Dire Hunt and Fun LLC.
Yeah. Great.
It's 160 acres.
Well, what, this property was entered, yeah, this is the farm that's out there. So this one was interesting to us, because first of all, you have this property here that they own. Then they own this one here.
Yeah.
Then they own these two. Then they own these two.
What?
By the Trumble family? That's a different family, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a different family.
But then this is Consumers Energy right here. So it's like, okay, now we have a Consumers Energy already has a, cause I think there, doesn't our pipeline come through here?
Goes through, right through there.
Yes. And they recently did some insane boring work up there. I don't know if you guys saw that, but that was insa- and kind of insane.
That same pipe runs through the um, Clive property.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as well as MSU owns another, I think, a hundred acres of landlocked land. And that's adjacent to Consumers Energy as well.
Well, I know they had to bore this wet area through here and they had like the largest boring machine I've ever seen and so.
Well, how big a diameter?
Um, I think it was like, the pipe sized diameter there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, and it was feet wide.
Wow, that is big.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just went right under the road.
Yeah. Um, so anyways, uh, because of that and then because of some large tracks, we put all those in play, cause we felt like, and then you're saying, Jason, there's even larger parcels back here that like, was it this one that wasn't included?
Where are we?
Here's the farm again. How big is that?
Oh yeah, to the right of that, there, uh, there's.
Yeah, that's one fifty.
Four, four, four different parcels owned by the Dire family.
Oh, we have that one. But to the right of that, it's these ones.
Yeah, and then just below that.
Yeah, so like this area isn't playing, maybe we excluded those, Jason, because we felt like they were too wet.
Oh, so that was one of the parameters.
Well, there, that's the thing. We didn't really clearly show, I don't think we were clearly communicating on this map, kinda things that we were like, oh, well, this could be in for this reason, but out for that reason.
Okay. Well, then that changes a lot of things.
This was just a rough map to try to give you guys an idea of like, hey, there are parcels that could be in play here. Do we, again, do I, in my opinion, think it's super likely that on November thirtieth, we're gonna have these people busting out our doors? No. But do I think there's a chance in the next year, we start, people will start asking around? I think maybe, I don't know.
So, I mean, those properties along the I, what is that, one twenty seven corridor?
Okay.
I mean, those, I think are prime just because of location to the grid infrastructure.
Yeah, and also because it's more so not what's going on on our side of the township even, but like, just look at the width though too.
Yeah.
And this was talked about, if you, uh, which we're here for the sessions when Eagle was here, they identified to zoom out here, kinda this area, this big swath of land being desirable, because you get close to population centers, but you're low enough for this stuff to have a little bit of breathing room. And so really, I mean, if I was even north of the Wit Township, I would be sweating a little bit more than I think we would be on the east side of Bath. But we're adjacent. Now, all the farm families that have come out and talked to us about some of this stuff, or we reached out, I know the cables were here at the meeting. They were very adamant that they hated it and whatever. And a lot of the other families we've talked to said, there's no way. Like, there's no amount of money that's gonna do it for me. So.
But you never know in that check actually.
You never know. And that's the thing.
Your feelings change.
Life is crazy too. Me and Beth have it all the time with our land division stuff. We're like, no, you gotta get this in writing. They're like, no, this is going to my kid. They would never, and then sure enough, five years later, parents die, kid sells it off.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that parcel to very upper northwest, that's Mackenzie, that's a hundred acres, but Mackenzie also owns on the opposite side of Chandler.
Oh.
You're talking about the S one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they own this one over here too.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good swath of land. And it's like, okay, and that's another thing we identified, we were like, okay, we had the golf courses on this and, well, I was talking to Beth and she was kinda, cause you know the families like Beth does. I don't know who all these people are. And so I used Beth to help me like, hey Beth, do, do these people own, cause it, we could sit here and s- search every family name and try to put it together, or I could just ask Beth. And she was saying, you know, like, yeah, I think you should include the golf courses, because again, I don't know how much this stuff could go for. Daryl might be asking, you know, uh, a billion dollars for Hock Hollow. They might give him a billion dollars. I don't know. So we put him on there.
So he retains ownership of Hock Hollow?
Uh, I believe Mr. Kessler is a majority owner of Hock Hollow.
That's interesting.
I don't know if he's a one hundred percent owner, but I think he has a majority share in it.
He's got the majority share.
Not to put Mr. Kessler's business out there. And we appreciate everything he's doing with keeping um our breakfast restaurants in play in the area. I don't know if you guys have been to uh.
Flapjack?
Flapjacks yet.
No, I haven't.
Yeah, they just reopened.
Just reopened.
Right, right there on twenty seven.
Alright, so anyways, um, yeah, let me move on though from the map. That's information. Jason, I did see you had some notes, so I would like a copy of that. So, cause we're, if this is gonna move forward, we're gonna clean this up and we'll dive deeper into this, especially if we're gonna try to write some kind of ordinance to justify what we're doing.
I mean, my, my, my novice read is that the northeast and northwest corners are where we most likely have developments. And most likely the northwest along the one twenty seventh corridor.
You're speaking specifically solar? What do you think? Yeah, that's a good question. Are you, do you think solar wind?
I, I don't know enough about uh winds, uh, but I, I remember. One of the electric transmission companies was talking about the importance of I, I highway developments, uh, for I, the tran- you know, large transmission lines. And so proximity to one twenty seven would make that,
Easier?
Uh, easier and, and more affordable.
Less.
Line to get to those transmission lines.
Yeah. Um, I, yeah, and I see here too, just, I should've talked about this too. Obviously, there's some large parcels down here. We excluded all the DNR parcels. Now, I don't know though, if the state will exclude DNR parcels. I don't know. Because I know, for example, with the charging stations, they put those on, all the state parks. Or a lot of the state parks. So if they're really trying to hit that, you know, what is it, sixty percent renewable energy number, that's their goal? And they're starting to get tight to their twenty forty timeline. And they still have, you know, the political will and power to do so. Maybe they put state properties in play. That would be a game changer.
Now, does, does that money come to the township still? Even if it's DNR land?
I remember sitting in on a class, where they were trying to figure out how this new law would be executed and reviewed. And somebody did ask the question, cause there were townships similar to us, had a lot of state land. And they said, are we even able to review that now? How does that work? So it's still land use happening within your municipality, so you still have regulatory authority. So I would imagine that, if it gets cited here regardless of state land or not, all of the rules apply the same.
Yeah, they're not sovereign or, you know, they don't have immunity for.
Yeah, there was no cutout in the law that was referred to that says, which there are sometimes carve outs.
Right, well, I wouldn't be surprised.
There's a lot of research being done in those areas, as well as some protected species, like the mossesago rattlesnake. I, uh, there's a.
It's good to know we have rattlesnakes out here.
That's the only place I've ever seen a rattlesnake is at the Rose Lake area.
I've seen quite a few over by Rose Lake.
Great. Now I hike out there.
Used to hike out there?
I still hike out there, but maybe not now.
That's right, mountain bike. I saw the biggest mossesago rattler I've ever seen. I mean, it was that big around. And it was only about this long. It was so funny.
Some of my favorite things about not living in Florida anymore is all the snakes I had to deal with.
Cause there's a lot of them down there.
Um, okay. Alright, so the map was kinda point number one. That was just an overview and to Jay, our takeaway was largely what uh, Jason was saying too, which was, you know, we feel like the cor- top corners of our township are the most likely areas we would see this. But just to try to drive home, you know, we have been spending some time even prior to last meeting, looking through, seeing what's out there, seeing what other people are doing. Ross Township, which we like, um, their ordinance and the reason we like it is because they're in a similar situation to us, where they're in Kalamazoo County. They're kinda right outside of Kalamazoo, so I think, off the top of my head, I think they're uh west of Kalamazoo. So the eastern side of their township is suburbanizing quite quick, but the western side of their township is still kinda rural. So they fall in that weird space that we're kinda in. Um, so we thought it was a good apples to apples comparison. We saw that they already passed through their board of trustees a solar side of the ordinance, and they're currently working on the wind side. So detached is their workable quote unquote solar ordinance, which we thought was more quote unquote workable, which is subjective, uh, than what we saw with Clay County. And word on the street is Clay County is gonna be taking a second look at some of their ordinances and amending some of that. We'll see how that goes and we'll keep an eye on that as well. But anyways, Ross Township's ordinance is attached here, so everyone can read it and get an idea, of what they like. I'm basically today seeking what we've been seeking on the planning staff side, which is just input from you guys, cause we are, after this meeting, um, me and Cade specifically are gonna start getting some words on paper. This will be something that I've already gotten clearance from Karen to work with the township engineer and township legal on. So just so you guys know, this won't be like most ordinances where we just give it our best. We're gonna have to work with people that know more about this than us and know what the le- legalities are. So this will be a similar ordinance process, really to the marijuana ordinance process than just our everyday ordinance. Um, with that disclaimer, I, I'm also asking you guys to understand that the more people we involve in this, means the better product we'll get in the end, but it also means the more time this is gonna take to write. Um, particularly once we get legal involved. They're very thorough, but they're not very fast. Um, so we could, we'll do the heavy lifting on the front end is the plan right now. Try to get everything teed up for legal to keep it cheap for the municipality, but once we get it to them, I mean, they won't give us anything bad for at least a month. Um, we have some useful links here. Uh, we talked at the last meeting. Um, somebody mentioned the University of Michigan and all the uh research and sample ordinances that they've put out so far. They've done a really good job and put together a pretty comprehensive list of, um, kind of where things are at with uh the passage of this new state law. Um, taking away local control for citing these. Um, whoops, sound like that, that took me back to the top. And then what we try to do is we try to create a memo. If you guys haven't taken a look at it, you know, just give us a quick read through. I tried to keep it as simple as possible, so sorry if it got a little bit wordy. Um, we tried to make a table that went through kinda point by point of, what we saw in the sample Creo ordinance that the ma- our, our methodology was using the sample Creo ordinance, that uh MTA put out and using the Ross Township ordinance, since the Creo ordinances have to be in line with, uh, s- the state um, MPSC regulations. We took that, we compared it against this one, broke it down by the large categories of the ordinances, and then said, what's most similar, what's slightly more restrictive, what is slightly less restrictive? And then there was only one where like, this is just inherently subjective and we can't make a determination if this is more or less. It would be up to the developer if they view that as restrictive or not. That.
That absolutely, it, it's less subjective than, cause it, it, it links to I, uh, special use permits. I, uh, vegetation, uh, and ground cover.
Well, yeah, we thought it was actually, we thought it was better than the states, because at least it gives you guidance, where the states was more like, we'll see when you apply. And so I know, as you guys know, like developers, they just wanna hear what you want. Like, if you just tell them what they want, then they'll just make the site plan like that. So we thought that was better, but again, we didn't wanna make a call either way, because it wasn't clear at the state level, so we couldn't determine if it was less or more. I think that, I agree with you. I think that's better. Um, so the main takeaway here with achieving a workable ordinance, I think we said something uh to this in our memo, wa- was, you need to identify what's important to you guys. And you, in, in turn, whatever you guys determine is important to you, you're saying this is what we think is important to the community. And then whatever those important things are, those need to be the key things that we go further from the state. Cause you can't go like further on everything. Right? Because then you're becoming in that unworkable category. Um, the things that we saw, that, um, even talking with some people in the law world, that they feel are shortcomings of the state process, that they really have been hammering home to municipal planners, trying to write these right now, is the decommissioning agreements. They thought the state was very lackadaisical in what they require with the decommissioning, to the point where it could put a municipality in a bad spot. So they're recommending really a soft touch on a lot of the dimensional requirements, but just really trying to get a um, decommissioning agreement that doesn't put you in a harmful place twenty-five years from now. And I guess, I agree with that. On this one, it looks like they, even with the setbacks, I think there were, from memory, there were three setbacks total at the state level. And one was a hundred and then the next two were fifty. And I think in the Ross Township, they just put them all at a hundred, so there were two different setbacks where they were fifty feet further.
Seven hundred foot set for, uh, setback for non-participating dwelling units.
Okay.
How does the setback work if you have adjoining properties, like we saw, where the same owner owns multiple adjoining properties? Do they still have to respect those setback lines?
Not, yeah, they use the language of participating, non-participating.
So if it's a hundred for participating, so is there no setback if they're both participating? Like, if you have a solar array, it can just.
That's correct. Like, let's say me and you both are, own a farm and we both bought in, there's no setback between us.
Okay.
Right. Just pull the fence and land, land him in there.
Yeah. That's my understanding of it.
Okay.
But it would be the non-participating part, property. So like me and you own a farm, we went in together, but then Ray is our neighbor. The setbacks would apply from our collective participation to his non-participation.
Um, one, I just sent you an, an article, or it's a website, actually. It's about, I just wondered how this is going to affect us. Two to five megawatt landowner and community-owned solar farms, solar installations. Apparently, they have done something, you know, smoke and mirrors, to be able to have landowners, private landowners, in municipalities, own their own solar uh arrays, as long as they are two to five megawatts, no larger.
I don't know, that would give a reading. We'll see.
Yeah, I just, I just sent it to you. So, you know, I didn't, I didn't know. I said, God, if that would affect us, you know? Cause Beth does, you know, does have some properties.
I can't perceive Bath, like.
From all along the Park Lake Trail.
That's a good idea. Um, so I, I, related to setbacks, there's one element within Ross Township's setbacks, that I think might be problematic for our community, and that's the hundred foot uh setback from a stream river pond, lake, wetland drain or land located within a one hundred year flood plain.
Yeah, cause you're like, that's the whole township.
Well, and, and also, I, as you go north, we're deep into the uh looking glass watershed. And so that might be seen as far too restrictive.
Yeah. That's a good point. So that's goo- that's the perfect stuff that we need to call out early on. You know, that way we are looking at that. What do we think going back to this table, we talk, uh, it sounded like when I was talking about, everyone was shaking their head yes, that the decommissioning agreement is important to this body. Um, Jason just pointed out a good setback, one that he felt like make our ordinance unworkable. Is there other factors here that we feel are really important, to call out? Like a fire, fire response plan? They went slight, slightly less restrictive, which was interesting, but maybe that's just cause the state drove home safety, so hard in that area?
So I think part, um, fir- first on decommissioning, I, here's what I liked about the Ross plan, that was within the MSU suggested guidance for workable. Um, one is establishing a surety bond that is I, I reviewed and re-signed every four years, updated every four years, uh, and it's based on inflation and current removal costs. Um, mandating I, the soil conditions, uh, uh, weather conditions, uh, when decommissioning takes place to uh preserve uh the soil structure. Um, and then uh putting into place uh a twelve month of consecutive non-production of electrical energy. Um, and then uh, putting into place uh, a twelve-month of consecutive non-production of electrical energy shall prompt an abandonment hearing.
Oh, yeah.
I think those are gonna be important because, you know, what's having clear definitions as to when I, I, a facility stops being used versus what the developer says.
Should it be not produce electrical energy of a certain threshold? Because you could produce some energy, but
Yeah, well, if you're producing like old batteries.
Five percent of your array.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, yeah.
It should at least be a public certain Yeah, well, yeah, exactly.
Because if they do that, it's cheaper than cleaning up the meth snake base.
Define it.
There were some regulations have that.
If you had like solar on your house and you weren't using it, but it was still grabbing the energy from the sun, then you had to sell
So just so you guys know, we're kind of making notes right now, like we're gonna define at what point decommissioning or abandonment occurs based upon wattage production. We're just, we're not gonna put all these details in the minutes themselves, but we're, Allison's helping me out making notes on the side. These are the things we'll bring to legal counsel and we'll ask like, hey, is this, because for all I know, you can't do that for some reason, but if it's something that is in play, then I'm bouncing any reason. The developer, you, me, we all are seeking the same thing, which is clarity. If they, if there's some wattage amount where we're gonna see it as, and we need to keep, uh, this meets abandonment, they want to know that.
Right, well, let's say like, there's an array set up and then we get a terrible hailstorm and it takes out seventy-five percent are not usable, but those little bits are still trickling it in. Then you've still got the solar array that's not producing much energy, but a little bit.
Looks like crap.
It looks like crap, and twelve months go by and they haven't fixed it.
Yeah. Great, I think that's great.
Uh, there, there's one category that Ross included that I didn't see in others as like a standard area. Um, and that was glare. Um, and so, uh, and ensuring that there's mitigation of glare on adjacent properties as well as navigation by air, water, and roadway, I think that will be important for us, or at least that would be a flashpoint among non-renewable energy supporters.
Yeah, agreed.
The one thing I was, that I saw it mentioned a little bit, but um, I just, I guess I have a question about is how do we manage um, animals, deer specifically? I know that where I work, my back window of my classroom is my look, my, I look out over a solar array that DTE has in behind our high school. And there have been some times where deer have gotten trapped in the fenced area. And I had seen it, it just said like
Seven-foot fence.
A seven-foot fence, but also has, uh, it's critter friendly where the, like the bottom has openings and there was another language piece here in terms of
Yeah, it says a fencing system with openings that allow wildlife to traverse over or through a fenced area.
Okay. I was just curious about what that actually meant, if it actually works. Obviously, a fence is to keep people out.
Yeah, why would they have a fence if they
But if, you know, I mean, if animals could get through, then people could probably get through. I don't, I was just curious about that.
Probably not security, like, security fence, but it's I'm guessing.
No, I agree, if you've ever seen a deer try to get out of a six-foot fence, that's not a pretty sight, especially if they get antlers and they get tangled.
Yeah.
Or a mother has her babies
I've had a, I've had a baby, we had it this year, we had a baby deer stuck in my fence on my house. I'm watching this poor baby deer like ram itself in the fence for like an hour. And now I'm like, now I'm out there like throwing it over. So, but yeah, no, good point, it seems like they've tried to address that the best they can, do we like that language? It's, it was a little like open to interpretation, I don't think that's a bad thing, because you just kinda put the design on the developer.
I guess that's something you would just ask the developer about.
Hey, how do you guys mitigate this?
Research or something that shows what's the best.
At least make it clear what we're asking.
Yeah, well, just because, and I'm sure Ross Township's probably the same, we just have so many deer.
Yeah.
They're just everywhere, and when they can't run through these solar fields, that's just more time they're gonna be running around in the road.
Yeah, yeah, well, maybe that's another thing too, if these are adjacent to the roadway, like obviously don't put the escape hatch to the fence towards the road.
Yeah.
Couple pieces under access drives and wiring that I thought are nice, but also we could be flexible with. So access drives as they're building the access, building the, the solar arrays, using geotextile fabrics and gravel, uh, to protect the soil structure and then removing them once they're built.
What page, what page is that on?
Well, I restructured it into a, something I could comprehend a little bit.
Okay.
It's under access drives.
Okay.
And then, and then wiring, I, I thought the language was kind of weak, uh, but uh, ensuring that uh, the wiring is buried underground, where practicable. Given our community with all the overhead wires, I mean, I don't know about you, but I, I find them annoying.
Yeah, we want less wires in the air, not more. But is that something where you think like, you'd like to see it underground more often than not? But do you get to the point where you're becoming unworkable? Those are all the things that come into play.
They're nice, but I mean, for me, I, I could bend on those.
What would you like to see?
I would like to see, you know, beautiful, you know, access drives lined with love flowers made of pollinators and buried, uh, but again, um, you know, given the locations and the, um, the uh, low density of the population in those areas, I don't, I mean, not seeing that, you know, how many people were protecting from, you know, some of these things.
Yeah. So, in terms of language, what do you want?
I mean, let's start with what Ross has, and then, you know, let the lawyers hash it out.
Okay. I agree, with the access drives, I guess my opinion was, I thought it was good. With the wiring, I would prefer to get that wiring in ground.
In ground is what, what that states, yeah. Just some of that wiring though, you can't put underground because it generates too much heat, that's one of the reasons that all of these aren't underground.
So one thing with the access drives, I mean
Maybe, maybe we'll discuss that with our Let's put, discuss wiring with township engineer to like, I don't know, they'll know, we'll see what's reasonable.
So one thing with access drives that I would take into consideration is that likely Chandler Road would be in access, access drives would access via off a Chandler, which we've heard on many occasions, the speed on that road is pretty high. I don't know what the traffic inflow and outflow is of these type of facilities after they're constructed, probably pretty minimal.
Word on the street is, I mean Chandler might have, um, an off-ramp off sixty-nine at some point in the future. That would change, but that could change the traffic dynamic significantly on that.
That rumor's been going around for just about thirty years.
I know, but I did hear from Doug at the road commission that it's like the real deal now.
Yeah, I talked with him at county about it too, and they just kind of said, maybe.
That sucks. Sorry, I, that's how I get to work every morning afternoon. It'll be a lot for traffic. I, anyhow, I, so, I mean, those roads are fifty-five miles an hour. I don't know if there's safety considerations there with turning lanes and stuff like that, so.
So maybe build in, in the access drives, like having a, have a sufficient deceleration lanes. So access drives.
That's a good catch.
You know, for
If at all practi- practicable. Practicable, why I hate that word.
So there's an area called repowering, and that's where there's upgraded facilities, um, and allowing upgraded facilities for greater wattage production without pulling new permits as long as the footprint uh, stays the same. Um, but if the footprint does change, then there would be a re-permitting process, I did like that.
I like that too, because panels get influenced over time, technology evolves.
Uh, they had something about transfer of ownership, uh, I think, which would be protective of us. So uh, there isn't, uh, transfer, uh, transfer of ownership requires whatever that says.
Yeah, like, and all, when we give this to legal, we have really ironclad language about transfer of ownership when it came to the marijuana permitting. So you could probably just copy and paste a lot of that.
Yeah.
Well, isn't that true, with any special use permit, it goes with the land, not with the ownership?
Well, typically that's how SUPs work, but in the case of marijuana, we, that's different for marijuana. So the SUPs that are attached to marijuana are tied to the applicant themselves because they have to renew every year. Now, for this, we're not, there's no renewal process in place, so if you are gonna have some kind of transfer of ownership that you don't want to occur, you need to call that out in this ordinance. Because without calling it out in the ordinance, then it defaults to the common, which is SUPs live with the land. But there is benefit in not allowing these to transfer, because basically if you set one set of rules with somebody and then it's sold twenty times before you get to decommissioning, when you go to enforce those decommissioning standards, they're like, you know, there could be a situation and how we're gonna enter the realm of what it, but there could be a situation where they're like, well, we're not liable for any of this. Hopefully you wouldn't be in that situation because you have all of the, um, and all the requirements in place for everything they have to hold uh, with the township, ensure that the funds are available for decommissioning costs.
The bonds.
Yeah.
Isn't that required every four years to go through the bonding?
Yeah, but it could get taxing on staff year if the person were trying to now four year, every four years to ensure that bond's there, they're like, well, they don't even own it anymore.
That's a possibility.
It's a possibility, so I like just the no transfer rule, because then you take away that whole potential problem. You, companies love to transfer stuff, I mean, that's, if you're familiar with, um, my god, I can't remember the name of it, in the city of Flint, it's the G, former GM site that is just a giant brown field now, it was transferred to like twenty different shell companies before they finally were like, well, we're not liable for any of this.
Yep. Well, how many companies was Frontier prior to being Frontier? It was Verizon before.
Same, they're terrible.
Trying to get it, take it off my house.
Yeah, so I, I like not being able to transfer this, because it just keeps all the parties the same. And if they do want to transfer, then they just come in and apply for the SUP.
So one thing that wasn't clear to me is situations where, I know storage facilities, battery storage facilities is a whole different
It's a whole difference, like a third arm of this thing that's becoming more problematic.
Well, and that, and that's where I think the, the fire response and, you know, becomes really important.
Agreed. Yeah, the propensity for like these solar panels themselves to cause a large like, uh, fire, I think is probably lower. Um, those battery storage facilities is high. And the ability to put those out too, it's like I was talking to our fire marshal when it comes to EV cars, they have the blankets now that they all have to get special training on, I don't know if you've seen, because they're, they burn so hot, they could just be sitting there with the fire hose, it's gonna keep burning, so now they have to snuff them out with the blanket. So I don't know how, that is a big problem with these battery sites is the their, the technology on the battery storage side is evolving faster than the safety around them.
There was a big fire in Australia with one of Tesla's battery storage facilities. Supposed to be the biggest one in the world. If you just Google that, you could probably find out something about it.
Well, like I said, I think this is a good start into at least the solar side, which in terms of land use footprint, this is the one that would have the biggest impact, obviously the wind, um, and the battery are significantly smaller land use footprints than the solar would be. So yeah, uh, we've gotten a lot of good feedback tonight and given us direction on how to proceed forward. Is there any, does anybody else have any input? And again, it doesn't necessarily have to be right now, you can read this, you know, in the, in the coming days and just email us thoughts. That way when we're working with the township engineer and legal counsel, you know, we're making sure we're hitting the points that are important to this body.
Has Ross Township, uh, passed this ordinance yet?
They, this one is adopted by their board of trustees at this point, and their planning commission is currently working on their wind one.
Ah, I remember now, you said that at the beginning.
There was, one more thing about setbacks, there was um, a condition of a hundred feet from any public or private right-of-way I'm just wondering about those consumers' energy pipeline areas. Uh, if say they were, a company were to enter an agreement with consumers' energy, I don't know if the language here is clear that it's a non-participating easement owner, retainer.
How do they define that?
I don't think they did.
But they, that should be something that we define.
Oh, then maybe in the definitions, okay. Other than that, I thought it was a great place to start. You know, for me, I, I put it into that Google Sheets, like I just chumped it out into the Google Sheet and I just put the MSU template, and I had Clinton County on the other side of it, so I could just read side by side to just help me rounds, you know, where they are relative to what's going on around us.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, that was our, with that table, that was our similar methodology, I don't think we went point by point like you, you did. We took kind of the higher-end line items, because there is a lot here. And um, again, we're not experts, that's why we're gonna be involving people that know more than us in this process. Alright, so our plan right now then is to start getting words on paper, um, tomorrow. And then hopefully by the time I get back, um, get it to the lawyers in early December. With the holidays and everything, they'll probably get us a response mid-January. And hopefully we can have a public hearing on this by our second meeting in January. And then have something to the board, hopefully February, March. So that's our current expected timeline, I know that's not ideal, but I mean, that's kind of where we're at. And again, Ross Township, there's really three things that play here, wind, solar, and uh, storage. And by the, they're on, on track to only have one of these adopted by the coming date when local control, and that's how most municipalities are, especially the municipalities that are going in this workable route. Pretty much no one is going the Creo route, it sounds like.
One question I do have about lawyer involvement. If we're gonna start with solar first and have lawyer feedback and then go down
Yeah, is it not better just to do it all at once?
I, I know that will take longer, um, but if the bulk of the ordinance is, are language is the same as, obviously as from, setbacks would be a little bit different. Uh, could we save some township funds by bundling them?
Maybe, I see what you're saying, I also think if the lawyers give us uh, their feedback and their notes on the solar, then there's more that we're gonna copy and paste into the wind and then theoretically it shouldn't take them as long to review and make as much edits, because they already wrote the first one. Theoretically, but yeah, they, they know how to run it up, they know how to run it up. But that's also the thing too, like if we send them two ordinances together, are they just gonna run it up anyways?
Yeah, they're, they're problems, I think.
So, I don't, I don't know, we could get this moving quicker if we do them one now, one later, so time seemed more important than, I don't know, it probably, the difference we're talking about might be like five thousand dollars, which is not a small amount of money, but in the grand scheme, it seems like the way to go. In my opinion. Alright, is there any other, any, any other feedback? Well, thanks for everything, guys, that was a lot, uh, Jason, thanks for all the research and the math too, I think this helps us. Yeah, just appreciate it and sorry, you know, that, uh, it took us some time to get this stuff to you guys.
Don't worry, we've got a lot on your plate, a lot of work.
You, you good if we move on?
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay. So I'm gonna turn it over to Allison here, um, these are just one of these community profile presentations that the interns have helped us out with over the years. We try to do at least one of these a year, the whole purpose of it is really just to inform me, you guys, um, kind of the state of things, I think as a body that creates policy, it's always good to get a refresher on where things stand in the community. And for the interns, it's a good opportunity for them to, you know, get involved and put together a presentation and do some presenting to this body. So I'm going to kick it over to Allison, so I'll stop sharing. And you, yeah, you know, it's a big one. And then you'll go and present over.
Allison, will you introduce yourself and what you're studying and what your life goals are?
Yeah, so I'm currently a senior over at Michigan State, um, from like Metro Detroit. I'm studying urban planning. So, and then next year I'm doing the plus one program that Michigan State has. So it's a accelerated masters of urban planning track. So that's my current goal. We'll see where it takes me after that, but yeah.
What Allison, you wanna talk to? I don't know if you gave this bill, but you have some, like you did your summer internship. What, some of your experience in planning so far? What you wanna do with? Or you wanna be a local planner, regional planner, go into the private sector? Do you know yet?
Uh, I'm still trying to figure out like what section of planning I wanna go into. This summer, I was a commercial real estate intern at ITC. So like the big transmission lines that you see everywhere, that's them. So I was helping them get easements and that kinda stuff. So it's cool to be on the other side of it now. Uh, hearing the other opinions about it. Cause they all love them over there, but no one else actually likes the transmission lines. So it's definitely interesting to see. Um, I enjoyed the economic development-ish part of it. Just trying to get uh, into different communities and checking them all out. So we'll see. Hopefully, my future has something to do with that, but never know, so. So Miles had me put together the L O community profile for twenty twenty four. She just going into a couple of the different demographics and that kinda thing about Bath Township. So Bath Township, um, according to the census at least, um, has like about thirteen thousand people living here. You can see, um, there's a big cohort of twenty to twenty four age people. That's probably like Chandler crossing the student population is what I would assume. But yeah, other than that, looks pretty even. There's a couple bumps, but.
Would you say this is a healthy?
Um, I would say it's more declining population, just because there's less people being born, like less kids running around. But overall, the student population, I would say it really bumps up the population.
Are you saying that Bath Township's population is declining or?
I mean, that's what this graph makes it look like, just because there's a lot less people being born in the township or a lot less kids in the township than there are. Of this like.
Working age adults.
Yeah, like seventy to forty.
So it should be more of a.
Yeah, either a triangle or just like a rectangle going up and down.
Unless you keep development going and have new housing stock.
I think the twenty twenty census would have said eleven thousand.
Course lovers. Puts a population in the township by eleven thousand? I think it's, no, it's closer to thirteen.
No, 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 I say twenty twenty census was eleven, I believe.
Oh, so maybe we're growing. I mean, the township is growing.
Yeah, mine do too. Just in a skewed way.
I mean, uh, men raised for the township, there's uh, eighty nine percent of the township's white. Then minimal of other demographics in the township, uh, just over three percent. Uh, black and Asian residents and then other miscellaneous, like less than one percent of native individuals living in the township. And then the housing stock, this one I found very interesting, actually. So there's a lot of single family housing. And then a decent amount of apartments, but we see this everywhere, kind of. We're talking a lot about it in class. There's a missing middle section, so like the five to nine apartments, um, developments and then three to four. The smaller apartments that are a little bit more money for like working class individuals that don't wanna live in the big high-rise buildings. There's less of those uh, in the township, which is pretty standard, I would say.
Why do you think that is? Okay, so you want to get off on a rabbit trail?
Well, I don't know, the uh, the nuclear family, kind of. So everyone wants to live in the single family houses. And then if you can't afford it, you live in the like big major complexes to try to save up money to get to those. But, and there's a lot of like tax incentive stuff that goes into like building the big high-rises and.
Hey, I think from a developer standpoint, those would be the least profitable, probably.
You'd probably see the lowest return on investment in those, so I'd say that has something big to do with it. But Bath Township had a pretty good median housing cost, which was pretty high. Um, about three hundred fifty K for the median house. That's actually higher than both Clinton County and the state of Michigan too. Those both bring in around like two hundred and fifty K. So it's interesting. And that, while rent is also higher, but just minimally, I would say compared to the median housing cost. The average rent in the state of Michigan's like a thousand. So this comes in like pretty average, I would say. And then school systems, we compared Bath to other schools that were similar or other schools uh, in the area. So Bath has about eleven hundred students and a ninety-five percent graduating rate. Has it has more students, so about twenty-five K or twenty-five K, two hundred, uh. Two thousand five hundred students and they have a slightly lower graduating rate. And then Langsberg is probably the most comparable. They have the same, like a thousand one hundred students. And a similar graduation rate, ninety-five percent. And then this, um, shows educational attainment. So the graphs are college readiness scores. So it's the percentage of kids, I guess, that are meeting educational um, benchmarks. So if they were all the way at a hundred percent, that would mean that a hundred percent of the students were hitting the benchmarks for these different areas. So like reading, writing, math, that kinda thing. Um, and I believe this is based off like ACT and SAT scores. So as you can see, like in twenty twenty, everyone could, kinda took a dip with online learning. But it looks like some of the other schools in the area have been able to like keep it even keel or bounce back a little bit.
Yeah, it was like COVID dip.
Yeah.
And we did high school alone this time. When Kate brought you guys the data last time, we did a little bit more filtering of it. And tried to take in K through twelve. Um, this time we tried to keep it a little bit more like, hey, here are the numbers. This is high school alone, isolated apples to apples across the board.
Typically, you would also show this data compared to like the county as a whole and then the state, just to give a benchmark comparison.
Yeah, for sure. And I think it's worth noting too, that like obviously Hazle is one of the like perform, top performing school districts. In the state, I don't want anyone to get to spare it that like these numbers look bad for Bath. Bath is a very good performing school district. If we put this side by side with an area that I worked closely. Which was the Flint School District for a long time. We would, but our school district would be off the charts better than the Flint School District, you know what I mean? So I don't want you to think like, oh, Bath is lower than Hazle, so that's bad. Hazle is like one of the top performing schools in the state. I think they might even rank number one last year.
So, I mean, I mean, one other thing to take into consideration is the proportion of students. I, who are college seeking versus not college seeking, which may play into a motivation on uh, doing better on those tests.
Yeah. No, that's an important point. I mean, even I'll use myself as an example. I knew when I was eighteen in high school that I was going into the Marines. And I already took the ASFAB and did well on it. And so when SAT day came around, I put C down the. Down the Scantron and wanted to get out of there as quick as possible. You're eighteen years old, you don't know how this all plays.
Well, now we know why it's Flint School District.
Why Miles's teachers are getting to talking too, cause he's not proficient in any of his scores.
About that now, looking back, but you know, when you're eighteen again, your priorities in life are different. And we, we put Hazle in here though because obviously Hazle is a significant school district in the township. We have a lot of children going to Hazle schools in the southern part of the township that drives up home prices. In the township in the south, um, obviously one air, just for the sake of space, these are the three we went with. Cause these are the three largest, but we even get, there's even a couple parcels in our township that go into the DeWitt School District. And there's, uh, our, our school district extends into the Whit Township a little bit, which. A lot of people don't realize in the planning context, how messy school district boundaries are relative to municipal boundaries. And so that's kind of always an interesting conversation to have. And the tax effects that have and the voting ballot ramifications that that has. I mean, there's a lot that goes into this. So on, on the point that uh, Jason is making was kind of the narratives that you can read into this, they're vast. More than I think we would be able to evaluate here.
One thing I did, I noticed that there was no amount of registered voters in the township.
Oh, that would be a good metric.
Yeah, total registered voters.
That's something we should look at in the future. That's a good metric.
Uh, we also looked into educational attainment. So I guess before I get into that. Um, the school age children distribution, that kinda goes with the uh, population pyramid that I showed in the beginning. You can see that there's like a higher percent of students that are in the high school age in comparison to middle school age. And then even less in the grade school age. So as those kids move up through the school system, there's gonna be less and less kids in the high school. So less and less resources that they need and.
Do you think it could also be that families can't afford to move into Bath Township till their kids are already older?
That could also be true, yeah.
That could be true.
I think it is true.
Yeah, I think it's, but what do you think, Kate? Like as an educator, this is interesting. We, we spent a lot of time talking about this slide in the office. Because we've recently, you know, I don't know if you guys are aware about the vast school districts, like not having a good time. Um, I would say objectively, they had to cut some money from their budget this year, I think like four hundred thousand dollars or something. And I know like on the, you know, my generation side of things, like millennials, we're not having kids as much. So that's a problem that's outside of Bath. That's, Bath can't do anything about the fact that it's expensive and my generation isn't producing kids. So that's gonna come to head here in the next five to ten years. But then that's multiplied by the fact that our median housing is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what do you think? Like what do you think school, what are schools, are schools talking about this?
Well, they'd be awfully foolish not to, I think, in my opinion, have some sort of long-term plan. I mean, eventually it evens out a little bit, that when you have fewer students, then you need less staff. And it, it equals out, but essentially, you know, eventually you'll reach a point where it's not sustainable. Schools receive the majority of their funding in a per pu- per pupil basis. But I would sus- expect here that some of this, one of the factors is that families aren't moving to Bath. Until they're um, able to afford it when their kids are a little bit older. Additionally, does this take into account school of choice students? Because there are a lot of students in Bath School District that don't live in Bath Township.
So it would not take into consideration.
Right. So, um, off the top of my head, I don't know, but for Bath. But where I work, where twenty-some percent of our students are school of choice.
Do you think that in for Bath Township and this is something I don't know, do you think, I'm just asking, it's interesting. Do you think for Bath Township, school of choice has been a net benefit to the township?
Absolutely. I think our proximity to Lansing helps that significantly. And the fact that some other schools like East Lansing, probably Hazlet, have put some caps on their school of choice.
Cause that was my thought, I was like, okay, if you have school of choice, like wouldn't that draw more people into Hazle? But you're saying they cap that.
They have the option to cap how many spots are opened up each year.
Determine who gets those spots?
Um, probably first come, first served. If you already have a sibling in the district. And then there's like another kid in that family when they are entering kindergarten or whatever, they would have a higher chance of getting a spot like that. Um, that was probably more common when schools were receiving less per pupil funding. So there wasn't as much of a benefit to taking additional kids, especially if it put you over your contractual obligations for staffing. Taking two more kids now means you have to hire another teacher. There's no benefit to taking those kids. So districts would cap it for that reason, but I don't believe that Bath has done that.
And like on the staffing, I know I'm asking a lot of questions. On the staffing resource side, are you seeing like? Or do they do like what say what what GM does, like auto production right now is not great and they're shutting out uh, facilities because of supply and demand, right? So what they're offering now is like, hey, if you've been here fifteen years, we'll offer you a work to, early retirement buyout. Like, is that something that gets discussed?
Districts do that. If they have the money and the situation with teachers is you can't really find new cheap teachers. Who are starting at the beginning of the scale, cause they're not going to college to become teachers. So most of the time, when you're hiring a teacher, they probably already have a few years of experience somewhere. And that's gonna cost more money to replace the person that you're buying out. So I would think in this current situation, that's probably not happening very often. But it certainly has happened in the past as a cost savings. But it's, there's less realization of cost savings, um, cause you, brand new teachers who are starting at the lowest salary are difficult to find.
Are there any other like the over ways that you see schools like streamlining themselves to deal with the oncoming lack of children?
Uh, just decrease through attrition as people retire, they're just not replaced.
What about like facilities?
That's a tougher question because you still have to heat the school, even if you're not running a classroom in every classroom. So Bath, Bath is not in that situation.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just, I'm interested in like the trans-society wise.
Uh, school society wise are co- totally underfunded and I think they're all coming up with creative ways to try and manage. To try and manage that in most areas in the state of Michigan.
Do they ever work on, alright, last question. Do they ever work on, um, you know, other like private public partnerships?
Oh, absolutely. I know. In Howell, for example, about twenty years ago, they built a secondary high school. And then the people of Howell decided that they didn't wanna pass the next vote to actually fund it. The most Livingston County thing ever. Um, so they had this building and they uh, leased it out to a variety of things. I know there was a bank that had one of their like credit union branches set up in there. Uh, Disney filmed a high school TV show in there. That was the set for the, the school. Um, I think they had the community college rent leased out space in there for a time. So yeah, that certainly is a thing. That's probably an extreme case, but that definitely is a thing. There was not, at that one time, there were no students actually attending school there. They did end up using it as a middle school for a time while they renovated their other middle school. They just moved all the kids. You go here now, while we're redoing this building and then they, they moved them back.
Okay, that's cool. Okay, cool. That was all interesting. Sorry you asked so many questions. Sorry, Allison.
Um, and then hopping over to the adult educational attainment, obviously it's pretty skewed by MSU. Um, especially since we went with like percentage wise. But according like across the state, this is really good for educational attainment, I would say. Yeah, statewide, less than high schools, like twelve percent for the average community. So three and a half percent is like unheard of. But again, if you're going based on percentages, then the college kids definitely bump that up.
Question about the scaling there. So you have a number of residents. I'm pretty sure that should say E N T S instead of.
You're a hundred percent right.
So the, the scaling is in numbers, but the bars are percentages.
Yeah. So I just thought it worked better to sell both, yeah.
Thank you.
But whichever way you wanna look at it, I guess, um. I would say the bachelor's degree are higher too, cause the median uh, household is like pretty high in the area. I'd say that bachelor's degree hires like professors and other people that work at the university probably too. And then median income by age, we thought this slide was interesting, cause usually you'd see the working age. Um, this like seventy K right here to be the highest one, cause that's when people are in the peak of their career, making the most amount of money.
Three million years.
But here, we obviously saw like twenty-five to forty-four, um, has a much higher median income. But I did look it up though, and then um, average retirement age in Michigan is sixty-two. So that probably falls right around in there. And then if people are making uh, higher income, then they might retire earlier. So that could obviously skew the averages too. But, um, Bath Township does have just more over uh, two thousand residents of, again, I put the C E. But um, below the poverty line, so like seventeen point one percent. And that is a lot higher than the average across the state.
What is it, like thirteen percent? Was it, was it like thirteen percent?
Um, yeah, I have it written down.
Statewide, I mean?
Yeah, statewide, it's eleven percent.
Eleven, even lower.
But is that due to the college students being classified in there because of earnings or level?
Definitely could be, yeah.
And I mean, uh, even if you average the working age, like what's averaged like twenty-five to sixty-four, you know, let's say that's eighty K. Uh, median between those two, I mean, that's high, I mean, that's a good disposable income in the township. Whenever we throw the township's median income and median housing value out to people, they. And or just our population frankly, I throw those three stats out all the time when I go to conferences and people are like, I had no idea. You know, it's not what, it's not three stats that would've came to mind when they think about Bath Township.
Like what Miles was saying, even if you average it out, like eighty K is much, much higher, about ten grand higher than the average median income in the state, so. And then just because Bath Township is so close to Lansing, I decided to throw this in, um, just to see how far people commute to work. This is obviously like by car, so the non-motorized forms like biking or walking isn't included in this. But a majority of people drive about fifteen to twenty-four minutes to work, which is just about how long it would take to get into Lansing. So, I thought that was interesting to see, to see if people were actually working and living in the township. Or if they were using Bath as a bedroom community to live here and work somewhere farther away.
The travel time to work having its own color category is confusing.
It's in the wrong category.
Yeah.
That was throwing me off too.
Small things confusing. It looked like all colors jumped over. But yeah, alright, that's it.
Well, this is excellent, uh, great visualization of the data, um, engaging. I feel that there was a lot of questions that we had, so thank you for putting this together.
Isn't that similar to what you do for the university?
Just not as well.
Okay, it's not as pretty, yeah. Yeah, I think Bath Township is a really interesting place and I think it's like important to get these numbers and these narratives out there as much as possible. Um, you know, there's some things we could improve on, but usually when we go through this and we compare it to the county or the state. It's more positive than it is negative in Bath Township, so it really does always push the, the fact that this is a place where people wanna be. Where they wanna live, and so I think we're well-positioned to move into the, you know, the next decade here. Um, and I'm not just saying this cause I'm the planner of Bath Township, but you know, I feel good about this place. I don't foresee Bath, what come what may in the next presidential term. Or what comes in, you know, some looming recession that's always on everyone's mind. I think that Bath will weather any situation, at, at least economically quite well.
Would you have any problem uh, sharing some of this data like publicly, I mean, I know it's public data.
No.
But I, just, I know at the board of trustees level, we had talked about like some more like PR stuff, what can we do, Facebook stuff on the township? And to me, these seem like great, did you know, did you know these are our demographics?
I wish we would do more of that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that would be something like maybe, you know, Taylor puts out the Friday report, but, and that's good, but it's like only for people on the email list. I love how DeWitt Township does, and I don't know if any of you guys get this, but they do their um, brochure. I think it's maybe quarterly, and they just have good stuff like that, like, hey, here's what's going on, here's some things you didn't know. And it helps push this narrative of like, this is a place where people wanna be, DeWitt Township. And I feel like we do a bad job.
Well, and when you say a lot of these things, I didn't know that about Bath Township, I'm guessing most of the people in Bath Township don't know this about Bath Township.
No, I mean, well, we've had people that are affiliated with our local government here be like, that's in Bath? And we're like, yeah, base hardware is in Bath.
Maybe the township should consider hiring like a communications professional.
Instead of a recreation coordinator? Yeah, so we need to do a better job at defining ourselves.
But my question is, if, if I were to suggest this data, these slides for that, you would be okay with that?
That'd be great, we'd love to put together a flyer.
Maybe just clean up that one typo. Yeah, we don't want those comments.
Well, this is, is this, this is not PowerPoint, is it, this is just a Word document?
No, it's a PowerPoint, I mean, we do on PowerPoint.
Well, I mean, you could just, you know, forward that to us.
I can clean it up first.
Okay, yeah, we don't want you to look bad, we want you to look good.
Okay, Miles?
Yeah, the only thing I got from, report from planner, I have any attachments, but just, we, when me and the chair spoke about this, obviously. Um, I'm going on vacation, um, I do feel bad that I'm missing some stuff, obviously. Um, but I wanted to see what we had in terms of app, if we had a development that was in the queue. And I was gonna be holding up something, we didn't wanna hold up a meeting because, just cause I wasn't gonna be here. We have a couple of developers we're talking to and some stuff we're waiting on to come in, but nothing that's gonna be at the next meeting. So, I guess I'm asking the planning commission if it's okay with the planning commission. Um, our thought on the staff side was to not force the interns to try to carry a meeting. If there wasn't a development that we're holding up, but I don't know how the planning commission feels about that.
I think that's reasonable, I mean, we could, we could handle a development if it was pertinent that we address it. But I also think it's a good opportunity for the interns to chair a meeting with the planning commission and address some of these issues.
Yeah.
That we're gonna push, push forward to the next meet.
And I'm fine with that too, and it will be, it would be a short meeting, but there's definitely like those two ordinances, they can clean those up. Or we can clean them up this week and they can bring them back, that way, it doesn't hold those from going up to the board.
I'll just let you know, I have to work late that night, so I probably would not be at a meeting.
Okay.
That would be the nineteenth.
The nineteenth is, no.
No, it would be the twenty-sixth, that's right, we had already talked about this, sorry, you're leaving the nineteenth.
Yeah, I'm leaving the nineteenth.
No, never mind, I, I can be here. But whatever you decide, John.
That sounds good to me, John, as well, but I just don't want there to be the expectation for a packet that's this full.
No, that's fine, and I understand that, and I, I hope everybody on the planning commission understands that. That we will have the new language cleaned up.
We'll have all the language cleaned up, we can get those moving, so that would be, I think.
We could have the public hearing for the solar ordinance.
Uh, I don't think we're ready for a public hearing for solar.
Then we could bring a public hearing for the Red Park like trail.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could have a public hearing anyways, we're having enough notice time.
Something exciting for the uh, interns to.
So, that sounds good though, I think Allison and Kate will be fine with that and um, we'll try to come up with a good packet then. You know, this week, um, I'll be at work on Monday next week, but then Tuesday I'll be gone and Allison and Kate will be heading up. The ZBA meeting that we're gonna be having this month.
Oh, that's right.
That's right, you're actually gonna have a ZBA meeting, aren't you?
Yeah, so, um, other than that, and the planning department, it's, we're wind, we're finally winding down a little bit. Um, we have recently seen like a, a couple of day period where we haven't gotten new permits coming in. I don't know, we got like some late fall, or you know, some mid-fall rush of permits. On the commercial side, we got a meeting with a developer tomorrow about a site that I won't go into until it's real. Um, but we've been working with Mr. S. Truth on plans B and C for his development. Given the health department's pushback, um, Clayton County Catalyst has been advocating for us pretty hard on that one. I know they're even trying to reach out and get a meeting with Eagle right now, so we can get Eagle's point of view on things. HDI continues to get their um, process together. Um, obviously, they have to go through Eagle as well, so whenever Eagle gets involved, it's gonna take time. Um, they'll probably still break ground this spring, the gas station has indicated that they wanna break ground this spring still. Um, so on the commercial side, there's still a good amount of things in the works. Uh, Mr. Kessler is obviously uh, trying to get the infrastructure in place for the two developments that have passed the board. Which is the Club Course nine units and the private drive units. He is development that he's seeking off of Gary Lane. Um, we are waiting on plans to come from Keb's Engineering, uh, I think the chair is aware of. They re-did some of the sewer stuff when they actually got out there and did some of the surveying and geological surveying. Um, they determined that they could do a gravity-fed sewer, and so they redesigned that instead of having a bump, which is better. Obviously, or that's at least what's been communicated to me, but that did require them to reorient and change their whole plans around.
Yes, it did.
Those, those are the condos at the south end of Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah, forty units, yeah.
So, that's another one we're kinda waiting on right now, uh, I don't know if anyone noticed, but I do wanna give staff here a little bit of credit. For two things that we recently got, definitely we played a big role in getting done. Um, the first one was on Webster Road, there was this poles that had extreme lane to them. We all bothered Frontier endlessly and it's amazing how much you have to bother them to get them to do things. But we did, and they got new poles in and they are vertical now, which is great. Um, I think they look good, if we could just get some of the wires cleaned up in the township, that'd be great. Um, we'll be working with consumers through the winter when they slow down and we slow down, so we can actually have some time to actually speak with them and they have some time to listen. To try to evaluate some of the wiring situation in the township, cause it is a mess. Like, I don't know if you've compared our wiring situation to other places, and I don't know if this is something where we need to evaluate our franchise agreements with these telecom companies. But I would say if that's something that needs to happen, then we need, something that we should look at.
Do we even have physical copies of the franchise agreements? Cause last time I looked, they were not produced.
That's not something I would know about, um, but I feel your frustration, um. So, that's something that, again, I'm, I'm been, I've worked well with our utility providers. To the point where at least I have points of contact with most of them, Comcast, Frontier, uh, consumers. Um, so, I've at least been able to have a dialogue with them, which I feel like is a better relationship than most municipalities have with their utility providers.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna try to leverage that through the winter. Um, the second thing I wanna give staff credit for is, uh, is particularly the interns. Um, we helped with, were a part of Tri-County's Housing Action Group, whatever you wanna call us. It's the group that was formed to implement the state's housing plan. And we helped facilitate a listening session, um, up in St. John's at the Risa Building recently. Where basically our target was low-income, underserved, housing insecure, um, citizens throughout the township. It was a focus group that, you know, was supposed to be smaller in scale, but it's hard to get the public to come out to things, as you all might know. And we actually got yelled at by the Tri-County staff, cause they thought we did too good of a job of getting people out. And they were worried about registration being too large, and I'm like, whatever, you know? So, it was good though, it went well, it was actually turned out to be like the perfect group that we were looking for. We were looking for like eight to twelve, and we had twelve people, and so it was great. And really interesting feedback from the residents there and just kind of an interesting conversation to see what they see as the barriers to housing. In the state of Michigan, it's always nice to talk to just like regular people that are actually going through it. And not just like some government liaison that's like talking at you. Um, and Ingham County Health Department helped us out a good bit with hosting that too. And that's kinda some of the behind the scenes work too, like stuff that we're doing in the planning department, that just because it doesn't necessarily go through. The PC or the board, it's not stuff you guys see the work that we're doing, but like the work is being done regardless. It's something more we're working in cooperation with Tri-County, and, and really the bigger effort is to build. Up, uh, fabric between us and these other resources. And to do that, sometimes we have to volunteer our services and time to make a relationship with them. And the hope is that they recognize, oh, Bath Township is a place participating in these pro, processes. Next time we do a regional focus group for the trail, maybe we should host a listening session in Bath Township. Instead of DeWitt Township, who gets a lot more attention from us on a regional level.
You also have a lot of information that you can leverage and help us craft a improved master plan.
Yeah, we, yeah, um, that's a good segue to into the next thing I wanted to talk about, which is the master plan. Um, just so you guys know, I was talking to Taylor about this today, uh, a while ago, the board okayed the planning department to. Uh, go after the MISTDA Master Planning Grant, we're trying to time it well. Because once the grant is awarded, you have twenty-four months to implement the grant, implementation is considered the passage of a master plan. So, you don't wanna like activate the grant and activating it is getting it awarded. And then not be able to produce a result within the twenty-four months and then owe them thirty grand.
Yep.
So, we tried to be strategic about our timing, we'll probably submit our application, um, later this month. Uh, or early December, I've got all the materials ready to go, everything's typed up and reviewed by the grant writers at Clayton County Catalyst. People that write these things professionally, and uh, I'm submitting it to Taylor before I go on vacation, so. She can review, you know, give it her review, and she's the one that ultimately goes on the website and actually plugs this stuff in. Um, so, yeah, that's kinda what's going on in the planning department, we're gonna go for the fifty. The max you can ask for is fifty thousand dollars, that's what we're gonna ask for. Um, hopefully that'll allow us to bring on some quality consultants to help us through this process. Uh, one thing that I wanna make known to the consultants, and I think me and John were talking about this. I'm not looking for something, I, I appreciate the work that Williamson Works did, I thought they did a good job. I also just kinda felt like they were just moving us through this process. And um, I think they didn't know like the key terms that we needed, the things we needed in the plan, they had the expertise. Hey, this is what the DNR is looking for, you need this verbiage. But what I'm seeking out of the master planning process is almost like a reimagining of what's possible. And I want to take a serious look at our current zoning map and our future zoning map and really. Evaluate those in a big, meaningful way, and so. That isn't gonna, we're not gonna be able to just like rubber stamp that, we, there's not gonna be a process where we can just say, oh, this is step A, this is step B. And we get you a plan, we're gonna have to be having much more back and forth. And one of the problems we have with Williamson Works is like, they're like, okay, well, in our scope of work and our contract. We only have three back and forth with you guys, so if you want more than this, like we're out. And so, with this next process, at whatever contract we get, I want to have basically more of. The ability for them to be here, hey, maybe.
Get somebody a little hungrier, they'll, they'll.
Well, we'll have more funds though too, I mean, fifty thousand dollars can go a long way. Before, I think, what, we were thirteen grand for two plans, so obviously, you know, we, hopefully with the funds, we can get a better result. You get out of these things what you put into them.
You'll surprise how fast fifty thousand goes.
I believe that, but, yeah, so we'll see, so anyways, that's what we got going on.
Well, congratulations, that's a lot of work and a lot of great accomplishments, so we appreciate that.
Thanks.
But you, you mentioned the same on Club Course, I heard telling someone what might be hanging that up is them getting their homeowners agreement from their attorney.
Yeah, I could see that, I haven't heard that, um, I, the only thing I heard about that, that we had a slight problem with was classic, like I said earlier. Developer asking for forgiveness and not permission. Mr. Kessler moved a little bit faster than Skomo was ready for, but Skomo went out and, you know, gave him a little wrist slap. And made sure they built everything the way they wanted it, so, that was a holdup for a little bit, but I think that's clear now.
I think they, they had that done for a while.
Yeah.
HDI is moving quickly to get that land shaped.
Yeah, they're getting, they're doing their earthwork right now, there were concerns from some here in the township and at the county. That they were gonna be doing more than that, and I guess like a bulldozer operator like started classically. Some contractor told some other contractor there'd be pipes going in next week, and so then everyone was like freaking out. And I called Chris with HDI and he was like, Miles, we're not remotely close to doing that. So, I was like, okay, rumors.
Yeah, they've got it staked out, but that's it.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Just about information.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't appear that they've taken the underground tanks, storage tanks out of that Admiral Station.
Yep.
Um, is that correct?
Come out, yeah, they didn't come out, no.
Yeah, I, I didn't see any broken ground over there, so, to me, when a station goes down, that's the most important thing, get those tanks out of the ground.
It's really hard to know what's gonna become of that parcel. Right now, I know the tanks are solid and intact, they're not leaking or anything, but, um. Yeah, if I was that property owner, I'd wanna get them out, but they're probably holding out the hope that somebody will buy it all from me, it'll become their problem. Which isn't, I mean, it's not unreasonable, it could happen, I mean, it's a very desirable corridor that's been growing out on not only our side, but the East Lansing, Meridian side. I mean, there's a ton of development going on on Sagino right now.
Yeah, there is.
Yep.
Thank you, Miles.
Yep. Anything else, Miles?
That's all I got.
Do you wanna talk about the Maxim and the Norm Fasteners, or?
Yeah, I mean, uh, just an update on where things are at, um, I sent out the email to our applicant. Um, which is a staff member from the Maxim Development, recently informing them that their site plan expires on the fourth of December. And that they haven't requested any extension at this point, uh, failure to do so or implement the project, which it seems they have no intention of. In the next thirty days will result in essentially the project being, um. Terminated as it, as it's viewed from the planning department's side, because the site plan. Is no longer approved.
And you haven't gotten.
They would have to come back and resubmit from the beginning, which is not likely.
December fourth, you said?
December fourth.
But they could drop in, request an extension.
They could, and they could, the administrative request can be turned around, you know, in a day. Um, but they, it's only a six-month extension.
In your opinion, how possible do you think that is?
I'm not feeling very confident in that development.
That's pretty careful, I like that.
Yeah. There's a lot that can be said, but, um, I'll leave that to Township Administration to.
Truth be known, I, uh, full disclosure, I called, um, Corey. And asked him, you know, I said, we, we get dribbles of information and we don't get any information. And, uh, I said, we wanna know what's going on, will you, will you tell us? And, uh, he was, he said literally, his CEO and the owner of, uh, Norm were, was with him. This was Friday, and, uh, he said that he promised he would, uh, call me. And, uh, bring us up to speed this week. And I, I did tell Ryan that also.
Were you calling as a representative of the planning commission?
No. No, that Corey gave his card out to everybody at the public hearing, including myself. So as a member of the public, I called him and asked him what the hell's going on. And he said, uh, we, we Turks, we don't mess around, you know, when we say we're gonna do something, we do it. I don't know if he was implying that they said they were gonna do something, they're gonna do it, or we said we were gonna do something and we didn't. So, I don't, that's what I wanna find out. So, it's, that's full disclosure, and I also talked with Ryan yesterday about two hours, and mentioned and told him about that and everything. So I will bring that news to you as a member of the public probably at your next meeting, or sooner.
That's interesting, cuz, uh, last time I talked to Kami Kessler, they still didn't have a purchase agreement.
Yeah, correct. And I just had somebody from the public ask, why in the hell is there a for-sale sign over there? And that's just because of that periphery that he has for sale over there also.
Yeah, well, somebody actually pu- asked, asked that question on Facebook.
Well.
The, the for-sale sign.
Yeah, yeah, I've heard, I've seen that on the Bath Community News website too, or not website, but, uh, Facebook page.
Yeah.
All right then.
Personally, I would not give them an extension, that's me. I don't think that they would deserve, or benefit, either party would benefit from an extension at this point.
Well, the extension would bring the project to fruition, I think that would be an exponential, uh.
Yeah.
Progress or fruition, you know?
I don't think there's any other project in line to take its place.
Well, they've had plenty of time to initiate the project. You know, I think you're just kicking the can down the road by giving an extension, but that's my personal opinion.
Well, that's a possibility, but.
I'm one vote.
Me personally, I, I really think that the township should have this. It's a net-net gain, I think.
I think there probably can be other developers at some future time that would be just as big an asset, or maybe more so, who knows?
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I will say this, just on like a silver lining here.
It's all speculation.
That the factors and assets on that property that made it appealing for Norm Fasteners, those haven't ceased, right? It's still a large parcel of virgin soil, right off of an expressway.
Right.
Class A road.
Yeah.
You know, all the utilities right there.
Yep.
So.
And what about that loan for the sewer, uh, upgrade that goes underneath the building, or?
That's tied to the project, and so.
I thought it was, but they.
Become null and void if the project is not implemented, but again, the same thing that led the MEDC to grant that. You know, if there was some future project, we would obviously go back to the MEDC and say, hey, we got another one for you. And the state's hungry to make these things get in the end zone, so.
I'd like to see them grant that anyway, so we could get that in and have it available for when somebody next comes.
That'd be nice. I mean, the good thing about this is, even if the project does cease. We've alre- we did do so much work to study that area for this, like we did Soil Corps. The borings, we worked through Eagle's process to understand our wetlands over there, so, you know, there was quite a bit of. Work that was covered as we're moving through this process, that, you know, would, have to be absorbed by the local taxpayer.
Yeah.
That sets us up for success for next time that this one doesn't end up going.
Right, that's exactly the case, yeah.
Has there been any update at all on the Chandler Road project?
You mean, um, the, they're tied up with Eagle right now. There is a meeting coming up on the twenty-sixth, uh, for a Remi Chandler drain. And, um, I saw a lot of people from Lansing, East Lansing, the County Drain Commission. You know, us, the way, are all invited, I asked Ben Zeeb if he could go on my place, um. Well, that meeting on the twenty-sixth, we'll probably, we'll get an update on where the. Consulting firm hired by the Clay County Road Commission is at in Eagle's process. Eagle has really gotten aggressive lately. I think they're trying to say that the Remi Counter Drain is a stream, and that, and the enclosing of that stream.
Stream, yes.
Would result in the requirement to improve that length of stream elsewhere in the state.
You know, Park Lake's where that starts.
So.
Right there at the water control structure.
It's a process. They're still, the Road Commission has still said they have a timeline of twenty-twenty-six for implementation.
Twenty-twenty-six is what I heard too, I think I heard Mark say that.
Yeah, they haven't changed that date yet, almost.
Zachariah Chandler dug that drain as part of the, uh, Wetlands Act.
Yep.
He acquired the, the land from the federal government, cheap or maybe from the states, from federal sources?
Yep, he bought it really cheap.
But the contingency was to build the drain to make that productive farmland, cuz that was the big swamp.
Well, I thought it was really interesting on, um, East Lansing's future land use map. That they had that four twenty-five, that's a sod farm, has like high-density housing.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that too.
Yeah.
And I was like, the wooden, and you're like, you're, what you're saying, that was such a massive investment there.
Well, but the, uh, my understanding is that the farmer, the sod farmer, uh, has, it's under what the, the PA, whatever.
Yeah, he has like some development, yeah, whatever, PA two sixty, um, he has a, sold away his development, right? So you can buy those back, but it's usually not, um, the numbers don't pencil usually.
It's fairly expensive.
So that's how much.
And like, the foundations of those homes. Yeah. So whatever, cool for East Lansing.
Yeah, interesting.
Well, how will that work when it's our sewer system that goes through there?
Well, then, you know, we always have that, there's that discussion going on right now, cuz there is a, um, a development that was sent to East Lansing a while ago. That's very, like, I'm just pulled up on the fash, not to. But yeah, it's, it's interesting because it's our infrastructure there, and, uh, there was even a development that. For this parcel, looking to do some industrial development, and I was like, someone needs to tell those people when my REUs. Cuz I don't want them to get all the way through East Lansing's review process, spending months on, can we do this, can we not, just, uh.
Would SCUMO weigh in on their feedback?
If East Lansing sends it to SCUMO for an agency review, we might not.
Well, who'd be the sewer authority there besides SCUMO?
It's us, no, there is no, they have to tap into us, or required to tap into ours.
They have to tap into our system.
But there's no system for them to tap into, so that's probably, you know, whatever. So, yeah, it's interesting, yeah, if they, if something was to build out here, East Lansing would have to work with us. Up until this point, they've been very reluctant to work with us at all on any of this, who I know the township has come to them in the past and said, hey, we got a lot of sewage. Being produced here, it's traveling quite a far away, could we send some of this south? And East Lansing's like, we're not taking that.
No, I don't wanna.
So. Okay, sorry, that was a.
Nope, no, thank you. You got anything for us?
I don't have too much, uh, the Board of Trustees canceled our meeting last Monday to prepare for the election. Um, the results at the local level, everything pretty much stays the same, except, uh, Ray Katkey was elected as Board of Trustees. Member in place of Jack Phillips, otherwise, everybody pretty much stays the same as our current makeup of our board.
Do you know if there's a recount going on for, I heard the county, um, was very close between Dwight Washington and.
When I looked, it was, I think, twenty-two votes.
Yeah.
Different, if, if it were me personally, and I could afford to pay for it, I would probably.
I think it's like fifty bucks.
The recount.
You think it's fifty bucks?
I think it's like fifty bucks per precinct.
Oh, wow.
I think it's more than that.
I thought it was like six hundred.
I think you have to pay this.
Per seat, pre- precinct.
Time.
Oh, maybe it's like fifty bucks for the application plus staff time, okay.
Uh, it just, only because my local school board where I work went through this a year ago, or two years ago, anyway. So I think that there, there had to be, it took on, there was a cost associated with it. Um, but if that were me, I probably would have, but yeah, it was, it was really close, but I haven't heard anything officially, but.
Okay.
I don't know.
Close to who, who's, who's leading?
Uh, Dwight Washington was, the, the data showed that he had like twenty-two more votes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's still sweating.
Um, other than that, I believe that opens up a spot on the planning commission.
Yeah.
Done.
So are you saying you're kicking me off the planning commission?
You kicked yourself off.
Then where's the rule that says?
By winning.
Hey, where's the rule that says that?
It's in our bylaws.
Uh, no, it's actually Michigan Planning, Planning and Engineering Act.
Yeah.
It's incompatible offices.
Yeah.
Right.
So what's, what's up with this?
She's our liaison.
Seniority, right?
You got me by four months, man. No, you were the first one, that's right, before Jack.
So.
So.
Well, congrats to you guys on the planning side, you guys both did well.
Yep.
But that's it.
Well, thank you. Any comments from anybody on the commission? Mr. Severie?
Nope.
Mr. Almarzigi? No?
Congratulations.
Yeah, alright.
Thank you for your service.
Well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody that was behind the scene, per usual, it's a nice, uh, nice pack that we had for the, uh, community profile, appreciate that.
Yep, yep.
And I appreciate the planners that spend the extra time going through all the documents.
Yeah.
And, uh, I found it very helpful to me personally, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate you giving us an update on, uh, some of the meetings that you attend, Miles, cuz it's nice to be aware of all that interaction.
I personally think we should all push in twenty bucks to Miles, so he can have a really good time in Europe.
Don't do that, definitely don't do that, that's conflict of interest.
I don't think that's conflict.
The threshold is twenty dollars, that's.
We can't commit to not creating that giant dumpster fire for you.
Yeah, don't do that, please, also, yeah, I would appreciate that.
I hope you have a great time, and please don't bother him while he's on vacation.
Exactly, I made a mistake.
I think I might not even bring my cellphone, so you can't bother me.
It's really good for GPS when you're walking around Rome.
My wife said she's just gonna put an air tag on me.
I think that's a good move.
Yeah.
I don't think my data plan, I have US Mobile. It's my plan, I don't know.
My granddaughter spent a month over there.
It's ten bucks a day on Verizon. And it only kicks in when you use it.
Yeah.
You can buy.
The promise, the promise.
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking about just buying a burger while I was there.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll solo.
Second.
And then anybody, are all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
Well.
Shut the lights out.
You can shut the lights out when you leave, I was.
We're not, we're not putting. I did have a question.